So my clock says we have about one minute until 5:00. It looks like we're waiting on Commissioner Dunn and Commissioner Torres. So if we don't hear from Commissioner Dunn by, let's say, 5:02, I'll reach out and let you know, Vice Chair McConnell, what he's got to say if he doesn't join us before then.
All right. Thanks, Jennifer.
Commissioner Torres, if you can hear me, I see that you've joined the meeting, but we're unable to move you over to a panelist. There might be a problem with your connection. Would you mind leaving the meeting and rejoining to see if I can move you at that point, please?
So Jennifer, if you can't move someone over, it's because most likely they're connecting like on a phone.
But I figured.
Yeah. So I need to get on like a tablet or a computer.
Up there, I see she's left. Okay, perfect. Good evening, Commissioner Dunn. Would you do a quick mic check and camera check for us, please?
Okay, can you hear me?
I can hear you, yes.
And can you see me?
I sure can. Thank you very much.
Yep.
We'll give Commissioner Torres just another minute here to get logged back in, and then we can get started. So thank you for your patience. Okay, Vice Chair McConnell, I'll go ahead and get with Commissioner Torres behind the scenes. If you would like to go ahead and call the meeting to order, we can go ahead and get started.
All right, well, let's go ahead and do that. Well, let's get started. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Jennifer, roll call, please.
Chairperson Bossert.
Excuse?
Vice Chair McConnell.
Here.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Present.
Commissioner calling.
Present.
Commissioner Dunn.
Present.
Commissioner Tomacek.
Present.
Commissioner Mayo.
Excuse?
Commissioner Zhang.
Also excused.
And Commissioner Torres. Commissioner Torres is trying to join the meeting. Thank you very much.
All right then. So given we have three commissioners excused off today, everyone that is present in this meeting will be voting. The first item and the only item on the agenda to be voted, to be voted on, excuse me, is consideration of minutes of preceding minute of meeting, excuse me, and that meeting was July 14. May I have a motion, please?
No move, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. Thank you for the second. Commissioner Carpenter, all in favor, respond aye. Wait, we gotta do that by roll call, don't we?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Vice Chair McConnell.
Aye.
Vice Chair McConnell votes aye. Commissioner Carpenter.
Aye.
Commissioner Carpenter votes aye. Commissioner calling.
Commissioner calling votes aye.
Thank you. Commissioner calling votes aye. Commissioner Dunn.
Aye.
Commissioner Dunn votes aye. Commissioner Tomacek.
Aye.
Commissioner Tomacek votes aye. And that is it. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. With that, the meeting, the meeting minutes from July 14 have been unanimously approved. This will close the public part of today's meeting, and that is 5:06 PM. Okay, the other item we have on today's agenda is a presentation from city staff, informational only, on the temporary expanded area food and beverage program. Will it be John McConnell that will be doing the presentation this evening?
Yes, that's correct. I'll lead the presentation and invite the other staff to join me.
All right, thank you, John. Floor is yours.
Thank you and good evening, members of the Planning Commission. This is Principal Planner John McConnell. Tonight, I'll be joined by Senior Planner Nathan Lawrence, Senior Urban Designer Sean McCartney, and Associate Planner Katie Schwartz to provide you with an overview of the city's temporary expanded area food and beverage program. Next slide, please. As you're aware, many of our restaurants and bars have been severely affected by the pandemic and the resulting state and local protocols for social distancing. Dining room occupancy has been reduced to a maximum of 50% occupancy, which has prevented restaurants from accommodating the number of patrons that they normally would. This led the city to begin contemplating how it could create a program that would support a restaurant or bar's ability to serve patrons at normal levels while also promoting a safer, healthier dining or drinking environment that complies with current health mandates. The result was the creation of the Temporary Expanded Area Food and Beverage Program. The intent of the program was to relax zoning requirements on a temporary basis in order to expedite the establishment of temporary outdoor service areas to assist the economic recovery of the city. With this program in place, the city reduced the barriers to establishing temporary outdoor service areas while also enforcing state and local requirements related to ensuring the health and well-being of the city's residents, workers, and visitors is maintained. So first up in our presentation this evening will be Nathan Lawrence. Nathan will start the presentation by providing you with a little bit of background information on this exciting program. Next slide, and Nathan, please take it from here.
All right, thank you, John. Again, I'm Nathan Lawrence, Senior Planner with Community Development. So back in May of this year, you all sort of, sort of might have read some things about different cities across the country beginning to explore options to expand outdoor dining in response to, to the COVID pandemic. Tampa, Florida, I'll give you a few examples. In Tampa, they had just completed a 14-day pilot, allowing outdoor dining in targeted areas of the city as part of their lift-up economic recovery plan. In Berkeley, California, they had just finished developing a plan that would completely close city streets during restaurant hours and repurpose other spaces, including private parking lots and plazas. And then in Mobile, Alabama, they had just approved a restaurant recovery policy that applied citywide and allowed up to 50% of the restaurant's private property to be converted into outdoor space. Next slide, please. In Colorado, municipalities were making preparations in anticipation of the governor's order that would finally allow the reopening of restaurants. In Boulder, they were exploring temporary right-of-way changes through revocable permits that permit business activity to take place outdoors. And in Denver, they had set up a website for their temporary outdoor expansion for restaurant and bars program that encouraged businesses to fill out an online interest form outlining their proposals for outdoor dining in anticipation of the governor's order. So in Westminster, we were really in the same place as these other local and countrywide municipalities, trying to figure out ways to provide for restaurants, options for dine-in, options within our unique legal and administrative system. Next slide, please. So that state guidance was ultimately issued on May 19, along with the announcement the restaurants could reopen on May 27 with certain limitations. And in anticipation, over the two weeks prior, a diverse team of staff spanning Community Development Department set up Westminster's Expanded Area Food and Beverage Service Program. A number of internal meetings had taken place over the short period in establishing inter-divisional roles and responsibilities. In addition, there was close coordination with the Liquor Review Board to ensure that our program would couple well with their requirements for expansion of liquor licensing areas. A completely new administrative infrastructure was also set up for the program, focused on supporting the needs of our restaurant community. This infrastructure included a website page that provides critical program resources along with a link to a simple web-based application. So instead of using our eTrakit from project and permit review infrastructure that we already have in place, we decided to process these permits via simple email correspondence in order to speed up the process and encourage or ensure a high level of direct contact with our local businesses. Along with that, a simple yet detailed document listing program requirements was created, along with a design handbook, which was developed to provide additional guidance and encourage business owners to create safe and inviting spaces. We'll have some more details about that in just a moment. Next slide, please. So I wanted to give you some background on how we got to, why we decided on a program, because to kind of dig into some of the code background. So as you're aware, our Westminster Municipal Code allows for temporary uses on private property, also known as our special event permit. However, in this code section, it wasn't really applicable because it specifically states that it shall not be construed to require a temporary use permit for the temporary outdoor extension of a regular indoor commercial activity, which really is exactly what we're talking about. So we then asked, could it be a new type of building permit? And so again, the expansion of service areas is deemed an extension of a regular indoor commercial activity. So technically, no building permit is required unless there are some permanent additions made. So for a temporary construction, really wouldn't be applicable. We also thought that even creating a different permit that's not a building permit would be cumbersome and require more work on our backend to get it up and running in time of the essence. There was also concern that it might be confusing having different permits, and people may think that getting a sort of outdoor dining permit might waive any requirements for a normal building permit if they're doing any sort of permanent structures or wiring. So we wanted to kind of keep it clean. So we utilized the authority granted by the Westminster Municipal Code for the city manager to set up a temporary set of rules and regulations to preserve our local, our local businesses in an emergency situation. So we decided to go this sort of program route for simplicity and to speed up how fast we could implement it, which was critical at this time, obviously, as all these, all these restaurants were shuttered and our city was losing a great deal of sales tax revenue. Next slide, please. So to give a brief overview, our program, in its essence, provides means of temporarily expanding outdoor dining into parking lots, sidewalks, landscape areas, and public spaces, including to right-of-way. The temporary expanded outdoor service may only be provided if indoor service is customary to the existing use. So that would basically apply to restaurants and brew pubs and breweries and so forth. Alterations to the property are temporary in nature and are required to be taken down after the governor lifts the state of emergency or when the project expires, which is currently set to end at the end of September. We are in the process of evaluating the program to see if we want to extend it as we get closer to this expiration date. So now I'll hand it over to Sean, who will give us some detail about the specific requirements of the program and the design handbook that he spearheaded. Thank you. Over to you, Sean.
Hey, thanks, Nathan. Matt, if we can go to the next slide, please. Good evening, commissioners. My name is Sean McCartney. I'm the Senior Urban Designer for Community Development. You know, this was a lot of fun. This project was a lot of fun. It was quick, but sometimes those result in the most creativity. And as Nathan had said, there was a lot of research that went into making of this. And we used the tips that were being used elsewhere. You know, the East Coast was popping with a lot of their outdoor dining. So we had things that we could use that were being proven to be effective. But a lot of it came out of this stay-at-home or safer-at-home order that the state came out as Nathan was talking about. Because in the order they gave, you know, details such as limited occupancy, which was limited to 50%, minimum separation, at least six feet. What was allowed was outdoor dining. What wasn't allowed, you know, congregating. Those type of things were what we were putting through our mind as we were creating this design handbook. And realizing that at the time that this was going on, which was in May, we did not know of any other municipalities that had a visual design guideline or handbook that users could use. And, you know, in times where you're trying to do something quickly, and I'm talking about the owners of a restaurant, they're, they've already been taking a hit. They're two months into this. They're going to be very creative, but, but there are some that might not have the understanding of the knowledge and what it would take to get started. So that's what the basis or the genesis of this design handbook was. Next slide, please. As, as I mentioned before, our time was short, but we knew we could do it. And so I relied heavily on the drafting program sketchup to create the images that you see, which are the hand-drawn looking images. I also used knowledge of previous experience in coming up with ideas to include in the handbook. Now, the entire handbook was a collaborative effort. It wasn't just me. It was, it was the team that's speaking to you right now. And so it was, it was amazing, the coordination that went into this and all the information that we're providing and doing it in such a quick timeline. But I did work previously in the city of Lewisville, which is generally known as, is kind of the, maybe the genesis of the parklet, which is the dining in the streets. So we could, we could bounce off of those ideas and establish creativity, a palette for creativity for the owners. And, you know, restaurant owners are probably the most creative people, as you may or may not know. So we were, we were opening up ideas such as using of recycled materials. We wanted this to be as creative and affordable as possible. But we also knew that we were going to have to relax some of our, our existing regulations, such as parking. You know, as you guys know, there's parking requirement throughout the city of Westminster that is going to be based on the size of your part, the size of your use or whatever type of use you have. So we knew we were going to have to get creative with that because parking lots, sidewalks, those are the quick and easy places to put a dining area. And we knew that. But then we also offered up all others, such as alleys. There are some alleys in the city of Westminster, grass areas and plazas. So all of those are in the design handbook. Each page kind of gives itself the, the expertise or the regulatory information that the user can use as they're going through all of these scenarios. And it also provides visual reference because again, as you're moving forward, you might know that, you know, using reused materials like barrels or tires or pallets with ropes are something that can be used for those barriers. So we just provided that information so that the user could go through quickly, get an idea, and then move on. So we also provided information in there for lighting and protective covering from the elements. So like I said before or earlier, it was a great collaborative effort. I'm, it's probably one of the more proud moments I've had at the city so far. So really excited that I was part of it. Now I'd like to introduce Katie, who's going to tell you about the real-time experiences that she's experiencing going through this in real time. So take from here, Katie.
Thanks, Sean. Yeah, if we could get to the next slide. So I'm Katie Schwartz. I'm an Associate Planner with the Planning Division. And my role in this new initiative has been to manage the processing and review of the temporary outdoor dining applications once they've been submitted. Like Nathan and Sean shared, the review of these applications has really been a cross-departmental effort. Staff has been really flexible, given the rapid development of this application process. In fact, in developing the process, was done so in a matter of weeks. So we started in mid-May, and by June 1, we had our first batch of applications out for review. A core group of the people, of people from various departments were selected to be reviewers, and we set an expedited, expedited review timeline of just one week. That's five business days, in order to fast-track the application so businesses could get up and running. The applications were reviewed for any life safety issues that might be apparent, but also for impacts to existing ODPs and off-street parking requirements. For example, we did receive a couple of applications showing expansions that eliminated handicap parking spaces. In this situation, we reminded the applicant of the guidelines prohibiting this from occurring, and we worked with them to revise the plans in order to accommodate the ADA parking. So once staff's review was considered complete, applicants are then given conditional approval pending their onsite inspection with our Building Division. Working with our colleagues in building has been critical, given they're the eyes in the field. Their work has been really essential in catching any issues onsite and also with working with the applicant to correct things. We've also been working hand-in-hand with our colleagues in the City Clerk's Office as they run a concurrent review of any modifications to the applicant's liquor license. Next slide, please. So we don't require a high level of expertise or design experience to create the program application materials, since we realize many business owners don't have access to design professionals or software programs. So we've even accepted site plans that could be considered napkin sketches. In order to assist the business owners, we added a step in our process to create and send a site plan template specific to their property if the site plan was deemed illegible. This prevented any delay in reviewing their application, but it also helped staff to fully understand what they were proposing. Overall, we found applicants have been very reasonable and flexible in their requests, and they're willing to make modifications to meet the city's requirements. To date, we have approved 27 applications for various restaurants and breweries throughout the city. A majority of those applications were received and approved in early June, and we've definitely noticed a plateau of incoming applications. But we're continuing to keep the lines of communication open with business owners, and we have the resources available to process any new applications that will come in in the future. Next slide, please. So with that, I want to thank you on behalf of myself and my colleagues. Thank you for your time, and I'll go ahead and end our presentation and turn things back over to the chair.
All right. Well, thank you, John, Nathan, Sean, and Katie. Appreciate that. Do we have any questions from the commissioners? I don't see any yet, so I do have one quick question. We said there had been quite a number of patio expansions approved. Did we decline any?
I can go ahead and speak to that. This is Katie here. We did approve 27 after onsite inspection. So 27 were granted their conditional approval pending the inspections. And there were a number that had to make modifications with those site inspections, but they were ultimately approved.
Okay, thank you, Katie. Commissioner Carpenter, you have a few comments?
I do. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, thank you to staff for this presentation. It was really enlightening. I, I really appreciate your flexibility and, and I, and as somebody who interacts with staffs all over the city, the fact you were able to have a review done in five days, that's just amazing. So thank you for that. Secondly, I wanted to ask a couple of questions about it. I know you're looking at expanding beyond September 3, or the end of September. I think you said September 30. And I, I would be in favor of supporting it, not only beyond September 30, but indefinitely. I, you know, personally, I think these outdoor areas are just, that people are creating out of parking lots and sidewalks and everything are really quite amazing. And I, and I don't see why we can't continue to do that even when the pandemic is put to rest. So is there any discussion with staff about making this permanent? And are there? And, and what, what challenges would be for staff if we were to expand this into some sort of permanent program?
Okay, this is John McConnell.
Sorry, John.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, I was, hi, Commissioner Carpenter. I was going to speak briefly. This is Nathan. I have touched base on it. I know that it's something that's being talked about, and I definitely agree with you. And so I think that, you know, we're going to have to look at some of the challenges that may come up. You know, we really haven't gotten a lot of guidance from the state at this point on sort of what this looks like in the winter. Because obviously, at that stage, you're going to have to, you know, close things in, have outdoor heaters. What does that do as far as, you know, transmission of a disease? And so I think we'll be, you know, hopefully getting some guidance on the state level that we can then, you know, apply at our local level. But I know that this has been a very popular program. And so I think it's something that, I know that I spoke with Eric Ufflerberger in community preservation just yesterday, and he said that it's something that they're just kind of getting into exploring now. So So we'll be sure to update you on, you know, forward progress as we go forward. And I, I don't know if John has anything to sort of add to that, but thanks for that question.
Yeah, I'll add a little bit to that, Nathan. I, I think Nathan did a good job of touching on some of the challenges that are inherent to any sort of outdoor dining situation. What we would like to see post-COVID is something that's a little more permanent. And, and we've, we've worked through a lot of these permanent outdoor patio situations before with other restaurants. A really good example of, of a city, a city and restaurant collaboration, a more recent example would be the Frolic Brewery. If you're, if you're familiar with that up around Zuni and 128th. They started out with a fairly small outdoor patio. It was a, it was a design concept that one of our planners, Jacob Kaza, worked with them on. They found that it was very popular. They wanted to expand it. The city staff worked with the shopping center owner and the tenant, which is, which is Frolic, to utilize a section of unused overflow parking. We basically had a section of the parking lot that exceeded our parking minimums. And it was really going largely unused. And so it was also conveniently located next to their, their establishment. And so we worked with them on appropriate design and lighting and access, prioritizing pedestrian mobility and pedestrian access accessibility, and making sure that we didn't impede any parking or vehicular movements and that. A lot of these shopping centers, trying to retrofit this is not an easy thing to do because you do have to consider pedestrian mobility access and vehicular access and parking. But we, we really enjoy working with property owners that do want to make these permanent changes. But we do expect a little bit more on the design side and the, and with permanent materials and things like that. So I think personally that after this is all over, some of these restaurants may want to explore that on a permanent basis, and we'll be definitely ready to help them do that.
Perfect. Yeah. Thank you very much for those answers. And yeah, I, I just request you stay flexible with them. And if they're able to do something safe with the outdoor heaters during our winter months, we know we get a lot of sun, even though we get a lot of cold as well. So I'm, I'm, I'm kind of excited to see what they can come up with as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Carpenter. Thank you, John and Nathan. Any other Commissioners have questions? Okay, I have one last question for staff. Have we had any issues with restaurant owners not adhering to guidelines and social distancing and proper protocols since they've been granted these temporary program permits?
So I can touch on that. This is Katie here. And then if anybody else has anything to add, feel free to jump in. I have not heard of any enforcement efforts from staff regarding restaurant owners not adhering to the protocols. So like I said before, before, we have had building inspections go out and see that there are things that haven't met our guidelines, and they've made those corrections. But as far as I'm aware, I've not heard of any enforcement as of late after they've been approved.
Yeah, I, I didn't think so because it's certainly in their vested interest to run a tight ship when they're doing this. Commissioners, last chance. Okay, well, staff, thank you once again. I've been wondering about this, and I've noticed it around town. And I recognize some of those seats as ones I've sat in for the past couple of months. So thank you again. It's very enjoyable. With that, since we already closed the public part of the meeting, let's go ahead and adjourn tonight's meeting until we meet again. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Yeah, everyone.
Thank you. Bye-bye.